Minutes.
He's talking too fast.
Motion made second in all favor.
I.
Motion to approve the non-public meeting minutes of one and two of April twentieth.
Second.
Motion is made, motion made seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
I. We should unseal the non-public meeting minutes as listed under three A.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
I.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
I.
Public input. You have anybody online?
Do you not? At this time. Two.
All right. EPW Director Joe DeRusso. How are you, Joe?
Good evening. How are you?
Great, thanks.
So just updating the Southwood Street project. B R going a lot better this year. Just scrolling down, they moved right along. Just talking to Michael earlier that they're on track to finish in June. They were taking a little bit of a challenge. They were sinking one or two catch basins that need to go in down by the grant company. And there's no clear record on where the sewer line was. We're able to find a lot heading today, so. The sidewalk crew is forming up sidewalks now, so unless they wanted to some problems, they should get issues finishing down on time, which is right around June twenty. Still hung up a little bit with the utility companies getting that one telephone call. Almost there, but I mean, you're communicating with them weekly because the cable company consolidated and ever so soon. They all tend to point fingers who they're waiting on, but they are, we are making progress on that. The other thing I want to bring to the board's attention, the sidewalk committee approached me about paving the parking lot out here beside the church, which is on the town property. Allstate has our paving contracts on the overlays this year, and they're going to be right down paving at Thompson Road. So they would not know what you're paving now. The sidewalk committee are going to vote on it, and I provided them whatever the cost they're going to vote on if I forget. The board's intention that they are willing to do that. We'll do a little bit of the prep work. They will be providing the funds for it, and then Allstate is a town doing damage to us, and simply move the crew up and pave it.
And. Great.
Any questions about that or? Okay, and then the last thing I have to do to purchase a fifty-two inch zero-turn mower this year. I just asked the board if I could forego the usual receiving quotes, because you can't get a mower. How to get ahold of the Rapid X mark to locate a mower, they were able to do so. So it's not like I can go out and get quotes on a mower, nobody has one. The price is very good considering the way things are right now. It's a bigger mower than the last one we purchased was a forty-eight. Inch mowing deck. This one's a fifty-two, a little bit bigger machine, and price they provided is pretty reasonable. With the mower kit, the mower for landscaping company would be close to fourteen thousand dollars with the voltage kit. The floor I received was eleven thousand dollars. One fifty-seven ninety-five cents. And they were able to get it, so that's a plus.
Make motion to approve expenditure up to eleven-five for a lawnmower from Highway Cemetery Equipment Capital Reserve.
Second.
Motion made seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
I.
Well, the shortage is real.
Yeah, and just talking Mike, where some of the price change, like, for example, I'm working with FEMA right now on reimbursement. I was quoted on sixty-inch culvert pipe last year to replace the pipe on Oliver Hill, gave sixty feet of it, approximately sixty-two hundred dollars last year. I wanted to fire the B R when they were paying to buy some pipe they had. So I didn't have to go and purchase it, but now I'm trying to get a quote for reimbursement through FEMA. FEMA said they would reimburse it even though we obtained it from B R. The price is almost fifteen thousand dollars, something that was six last year, so we're seeing that constantly with supplies, equipment. A positive, no way, so be able to purchase this mower. It's pretty close to what the prices were two years ago. But the one that we're replacing will be able to sell on municipal, and the landscape company can't get mowers, so I have a feeling it'll probably bring pretty decent money on municipal when we do put that up and take it to the other one.
Great.
Yep. Do you want to just mention, just because it was a good collaboration, South Road?
Yes, I believe I mentioned that last time I was here, we got a box culvert on South Road, and Weber Hill Road collapsed. Create a sinkhole, and I got the state and went in, had to be replaced. And we worked together with the state, it's right where the road comes to an intersection, and replaced it, and we both supplied materials. So we basically split the cost of it, but worked together for a few days. We were able to replace it, and then we also got rid of the slip lane at Weber Hill intersection, instead of having a lane coming in one way and a lane coming in the other. It's now a T head, which is safer and better for visibility. So just needed to do a little bit of paving in there. Once the state goes through, I contacted Continental, although I'll pave in our intersection, but I'm not sure if they don't want to do that when they're doing the main, where they need to put out so much time a day for what they did. So I maybe after they're done, I'll come back and look favor and pay the intersection. But it was good to work together with both crews, both crews worked together, and we got a higher contract, they get a big excavator, and they were able to work. We're doing that successfully in two days. Then, as I indicated before, we're doing a middle lane drainage project, the trees were removed, yes, two days ago. So we're going to be dumping those catch basins that go nowhere now, middle lane and the ball field. Across the road, we received that easement from the Blakes. Need to get that done before they pay, and then it'll afford the ability to fix the parking lot down at South Road. Because they really haven't done much with it over the years, because it constantly floods. Now it no longer flood, and John Holmes already worked on getting some hard path to improve that parking lot down there. So we keep that work within the next two weeks or so. A lot going on on the projects, and that's on to Cowan Hill Road, which we have a lot to get done before the paper will turn in June.
We have some happy people up there when that one gets done.
Sure. Yeah, that middle lane intersection would be much better.
Yeah, we'll do a little bit of paving once they've done it, but the problem was those catch basins that are there went nowhere, they were basically dry. So when you got enough rain that they filled up, didn't leach anymore, just went on the road. This winter, we had two B device down there, there was really nothing we could do with it. Now that shouldn't happen, because the water will drain across the road, and we can fix up that intersection a little bit once they pave through. It was really bad, as you know.
Don't forget.
I didn't. I didn't. It's on the list.
After all the other routes are done. Lawnmower.
One thing I keep an eye on is Marcy Hill, it's not slated until twenty twenty-six. Shimmerable, it's starting to break up in spots pretty bad. We've been on their patch, and it's, it's in rough shape, so if we do come up with some leftover funds or something, I may do some shimming up there, but it's, I'm sure you've been here. Because I get calls on it, and it's almost, only so much we can do with patch. One of the priorities would be, if I do have any leftover, is to, the approach to root well really needs a little bit of work to start with. But then there's a couple areas up on the hill that the pavement's just, they're putting patch down, but you can see gravel, it's just breaking apart. So the first time it rains and high speed, the cars coming over just breaks up again.
A lot of people live up there.
Yeah, you'll be busy for a while.
Definitely.
Great.
So that's all I have.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Jim.
Have a good night.
Thanks.
Alice. Welcome.
Just a little bit of a revision of what I came with last time. It's still, I'm working with the Hannah Garden Center still, with some Carbone Coaches. So it's still kind of living duck in this, I guess. Yeah, I just, I wanted to come in and touch base with you guys about the progress and a little bit of a hangup, I guess, that they're surprised, I should say, that.
It's an accelerator.
It's an accelerator, okay. Was a surprised accelerator. So I, I've actually received notice last week that my homeowner's insurance is going to drop me because of having the childcare system in my house. Not, I mean, it's not an end-all, of course, it's just the owner's insurance, but they are struggling, the company I work for is struggling to find someone to replace that. They, they're going to look into quotes for me for the beginning of May. They, so they couldn't actually run any quotes until there was thirty days before my insurance runs out. And it's, sorry, June seventh is the date that they are telling me that they will drop my owners. So we're looking.
July.
What?
June one?
June seventh, sorry. Yeah, June seventh is the, the date that the homeowner's insurance is dropping us. So let's just keep our fingers crossed, nothing falls on the house. But I'm just, I'm, I'm coming today to see if there would be a possibility to accelerate our original plan. And allow me to move Honeybee Hollow into the Carpenter Home to start utilizing the space for the summer. So that I can work around this, like Mike said, as Michael said, an accelerator. A little bit faster than I originally planned, but not a bad thing. So I started working with the Hannah Garden Center, Hannah Garden Center before this happened, so that I.
So if you, if you were to remove the childcare facility from where you currently are, you would be able to get a loan?
Yes, yes, they would. They would allow me to stay on the plan that we currently have. The homeowner's insurance is increasing for childcare, personally, for family childcare. This family childcare is so important in the community anyway. You know, a lot of people like that small thing, you feel, but it's hard to get insurance. And I, I use New England Insurance Services in Connecticut, and they've been wonderful. But approaching insurance companies myself, I had no luck, so I had to go through New England Insurance. And they provided me with childcare insurance. I have a childcare policy, and I have workers come through them, and then they provide the homeowners. Basically, back to saying, we have, she has this insurance. But Vermont Mutual said that they were no longer going to provide that as a policy. It's not just mine, every daycare, every family childcare. And, and that has a policy, and it's using their insurance. So far, they've only told me nationwide, the, the only option, the, the potential option they're looking into. I'm still not sure what the, what the quote looking or anything, but. Where's the, we'll see, we'll see. But I'm hoping that maybe we can work something out that we can be forward. Moving into, into the Carpenter Homes as, as Honeybee Hollow. That's the business that I have right now. It is a for-profit. It would be for the three months of the summer while I'm working on building my board to be stronger. It's actually, I, I did have a very interesting conversation yesterday with the woman who oversees my grant as Honeybee Hollow. And there's the potential that growing into the space, they would be willing, if I, if I stayed Honeybee Hollow for this short period of time, there was the potential of getting some extra grant funding. Which would be an amazing thing. And that would, that would help us through to September, and then we would make the transition to a nonprofit. I added a little milestone chart in here to show. Sorry, I do not know what the date is, so it's. And if, if this were, if this proposal were to happen, we would need to do inspections and apply for a childcare license like next month. And then my, to my for-profit would be at the Carpenter Home, beginning June sixth. And then moving forward, I would keep working on my, my, trying to have the board fully formed and the nonprofit corporation file by July. And hopefully receiving five oh one three. C three status by late August. I can't guarantee what the IRS would be able to accommodate, who knows? And then aiming to be at half or to three-quarters of the full capacity of the Carpenter Home by Sept, by the end of August, going into the school year. Completing the renovations on the, on either end, minimum renovations through September, January, operating, opening at full capacity by next January. Goals. So that's in a perfect world, if we have staffing and all of that to lead us to that, that space. I, I know there's chase and changes that have happened recently with the school losing their before-school program and losing their half-day pre-K program, and a half-day childcare piece for the pre-K program. That will no longer be happening next year, so I've got a lot of interest in trying to offer that. I could walk children over to the school. So there's a lot of people that are looking into this, and the grant funding that I talked to the woman about could be used for staffing incentives. A twenty-five percent at a minimum has to be used for staffing incentives anyway, so hopefully help speed up the process of getting to full capacity. Yes, that is what I meant. I included. This, this is the plan I've been working on with, I met with Karen Fisher from the Hannah Garden Center last Friday. She's still supposed to be looking this over for me. Tomorrow, I'm meeting with three other coaches. I took the day off for a doctor's appointment, and I'm meeting with three other coaches from the Hannah Garden Center. And we are going to be discussing legal, the nonprofit legal aspects. Going over creative bylaws and discussing my filing of a nonprofit corporation with, with a attorney, and then I will be meeting with a nonprofit coach and financial coach who will help over my numbers. So this, like I said, it's a working document. I've, I did do some, some adjustments and looked into more grant funding and everything, and, and did I, I feel have a little better margins with, with still with some help from the town, maybe, so keeping the spirit of Lucy Carpenter. You know, trying to, to follow in her, what her goal was with donating the Carpenter Home. I've been, I'm, I'm leaning towards the Valley View now. Originally, I was leaning towards Old Homestead, but the last time I was there, I was like, I feel like this is what she called it, it was the Valley View. That was her, that was the name of what she called her little farm, her homestead. Still working progress, but we'll see, and.
There's a lot of old homesteads, so I think.
There is a lot of old homesteads, so I was, I was leaning towards that, yeah. I've also, I have reached out to Joanne Bennett, and she agreed to meet with me to discuss the, the project. And I reached out to my advisor, Anya, who is an amazing, she's a major-based educator. And she agreed to meet with me next week or the week after. I'm trying to work out a date to potentially build up the board. Yeah, and this, this is my map. I'm just hoping that I can make it work somehow. I can give it okay to try and, to try and pull this off. I mean, even, even in with the original plan, the end of June was our potential start date anyway. And I wasn't potentially going to be able to be a nonprofit yet anyway, because of the process. But it turns out that staying the for-profit for a short period of time while I'm working on this and getting, getting the five oh one three C app. Yeah. The status, we, it's actually, it could be more beneficial for, it's just to start up. The funds could be, like I said, used for staffing, it can be used for furnishings, and just not give use for any, can be used for renovations, but not expansions. Like, so it can add on or anything, which wasn't a plan anymore. So yeah, that's on my, I'm not really doing anything.
You got a lot better.
I've got a lot of anything.
We got, we got almost a ninety-page report from the home inspector. I'm still going through it, to report back to you guys. A quick review of it is, it's pretty much everything we already knew. Which is nice, you didn't find anything really unusual, a lot of housekeeping things. I'm going to go through that in the next couple weeks and get back to you guys with a basic synopsis of what, when, roughly how much, types of, but pretty straightforward, nothing, nothing even, nothing revolutionary. The good news was the water test came back really good, except for we have a little high on our air, which we got to be high on something. High on would be the best thing to do. Radon, I was really nervous about radon, built on granite. Great shape of radon, barely had any at all, which is wonderful. Make out the leaks. So, you know, it was mostly just, the big things I've seen so far, you know, the front part of the building needs new roof, we know that can use it to do with pressure, something. Clearly knew that, needs to be front over new that, so. That was good. It was a good chance to record. But nothing, nothing, any old boy, that's an early statement, so we're good shape that way.
Did you do radon air and water?
I'm sorry?
Did you do radon air and water?
No, I know we did air. I don't know, I don't know if you did water. I don't know that.
It doesn't matter, I was just curious.
Yeah.
When you said it came in really well.
Yeah, there, there was rain.
Are we covering utilities?
Yes.
For how long?
So, so how the lease is sort of structured, because there are existing utilities we're paying, is that we would continue to pay it. And then ideally, it would be factored into the rent. At what point we get to fully covering all the utilities is subject to negotiation.
Well, we would be fully covering them, so.
When the rent would be fully covering them. When the rent you would be paying would be fully covering the expenses.
Okay. So, so this is essentially revenue neutral?
The goal is to get to that point. I don't, I haven't had a chance to run through the numbers to see what.
The initial rent would, would, should cover most of the expenses, the one for the summer. I don't think we run AC in there, do we?
I don't know the.
We used to have.
Carpenter Home, I mean, they wanted, they wanted the heat on in July, so.
Yeah, we used to have some, we used to use refrigerators once in a while. The way it's situated, Carpenter Home actually does a great job of staying naturally cool, like frankly.
You're right, I mean, heat is a huge, is a huge expense there, since it's a big building. So, yes, the utilities would be lower at the summer.
Okay, well, that's good, because we're, we're not getting anything for this.
Paying them anyway, exactly.
So I'm a little confused with regard to the September to May and the twelve-month future budget from the standpoint of rent.
Yeah.
So for, for twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, you're at nine hundred a month.
Yeah.
At what point does it change to twenty-five hundred?
That would be when we reevaluate after nine months, if, if that was. If that's possible. We could reconvene soon. I, I did, it was about a third, I, we're of the, what was listed for the, the average utilities or the average monthly amount or yearly amount. I broke it down.
Yeah, we just took a yearly.
Yeah.
By twelve, so we didn't try to figure out, you know, lower, lower months in the summer, because the heat wasn't being where that was just an average.
So our, our, our usage for the summer is really just electricity? I would think.
Electricity, internet, if it has it and it doesn't, I assume they need it.
Ah, yeah, I included internet in my own.
Oh, you have that separately, okay.
Yes, I put it in my own. These. Phone it.
Okay.
And so I think I'm, I'm having that.
So yes, largely electricity.
And then as we, as we get into the remainder of the year, obviously, we transition to oil. So it would be, it would be great to see the nine hundred get to twenty-five hundred as, as quickly as possible without putting you out of business, because we're covering all the other expenses.
Yes.
Is there an anticipation of building up something like a capital reserve that will help us with the roof and other roofs that need to be done? Windows, as we go along, are we anticipating? Because the twenty-five hundred should more than compensate for the utilities, I'm hopeful. Well, we have the fund, right? I mean.
The fund being the Lucy Carpenter fund?
Right.
So the idea is that once, once the side prey gets proved, that would be used to further the purpose, since the build, since the building would not be. So it'd be, that would be used to provide funds to help the poor and unfortunate residents of Swansea.
Even the young ones.
Yeah.
Collateral damage. Just kidding, just kidding, I'm kind of recording. It's like my comment about, I didn't say that.
But we do have the expendable trust fund.
So I, yeah, but I, I, I don't think we should be subsidizing a business, and that's the gist of what I'm hearing. Am I wrong about that?
You're saying for that first six months?
No, I, I think it's great to get things, get things rolling, but yeah, I don't, I think we.
Correct. The goal is to be revenue neutral as soon as possible.
And building the last page, it's a twelve-month future budget.
Yeah.
Yeah.
She has the twenty-five hundred a month in there.
Yes.
I expect.
That's, that's what I'm hoping to get to. That is my goal. I was going to say also, the, the woman that I spoke to about my grants said that in August, they're actually rolling out, they're going to be rolling out another grant program for childcare centers. That will actually allow for expansion and, and renovation specifically, so I'll be able, I could potentially use that. There's also something that Sarah, is it Sarah sent to me that I'm looking into? That is for nonprofits and municipalities to apply for grant funding for renovations and expansion. So it's not, obviously not guaranteed, it's grant funds, but childcare is, is in the lead right now, so I, that's definitely high everyone's radar.
Great.
So I've been looking into extra, extra funding.
Well, we would certainly collaborate with you with regard to filing for those. And as Sarah did, and Michael will, and Michael will, though, whatever opportunities come available. But I, I just want to be sure that we're building a reserve. I don't really want to go into the fund. I want to be able to explain it to the taxpayers. In other words, why, why are we, granted, it's a good use.
Yes.
And you're a wonderful person to be, to be pulling it together. All of that's understood, but to be able to pass the, the test, so.
Yeah. And as a taxpayer, I appreciate. I appreciate this.
Well, it looks like you've been able to pull some real data into your numbers that you didn't have before, so good for you.
Yes, and I'm still, like I said, I, I will be meeting with another coach tomorrow, Julianne Dodson, who will be helping me with the financial piece completely. Like, I just haven't had a chance to meet with her. I wanted to come here as quickly as I could because of the, the homeowner's insurance threw me for a loop. Oh, no. So, yeah, I have all those meetings tomorrow, and I'd be happy to come back again after talking to her about it and making sure that, like, she agrees my numbers are looking good. And, yeah. I'm, I'm trying to become a strong businesswoman.
You already are, just enhancing your skills.
Yeah.
So do your empire.
Yes.
Michael. Are, are we in a situation based on that report that she's going to be able to take occupancy on June sixth?
Yeah, I gotta get, we'll get together with her and licensing. I'm feeling pretty good.
Yeah, I mean, the, the goal was, I'm going to stay roughly the same size. And, and just be in that center part of the building to start, so there's not much that needs to happen to get in there, other than a fire, any fire assessment. We already did the water test and inspection, and then the rest is on me, filling out the application, something in it, and.
Then I have to remain vocal and vigilant with all of us, and I think it'll be fine. She's going to be up there, and you've got to follow us, make sure that we're.
I suspect.
We talked about doing a multi-tenant application for the planning boards, that will again get some word, word out there, let the neighbors know what's going on. Bring it that scheduled before she plans to start, correct?
Yeah, I mean, I said you work on that paperwork next week, get it, get it moving.
Great.
Because you only have the, the last meeting of the month. All of a sudden, it's here.
And then parallels, everyone knows we've been working on the side prey petition with the probate court to get the building flexible enough to be able to be used for this purpose. We had that hearing telephonically yesterday morning, went well. Their main questions, which weren't necessarily negative, but their main questions were, okay, now you got this pot of money, how is that going to be used? So I don't, there wasn't a lot of concern about the building. They recognized that, you know, Lucy's wish of it being a home for the unfortunate residents of Swansea is not so practical anymore, so they didn't have any concerns with that, but even the money thing, I think they just wanted to understand it a little bit better, so. As we had discussed it with the charitable trust division, there's a balance. They want it to be specific and used for the purpose, but they also want us to be able to use it. You know, nothing, no benefit to anyone of having a pot of money that's so restrictive that it can't be used, so I think they recognize that. So I think we haven't gotten a signed order yet, but I expect that soon. And separately, Alice and I have been working kind of through, make a little bit on a draft lease, which I have. You probably don't want to look at it, because it's still pretty rough, and it's longer than, longer than it needs to be at this point. But I sent it through PrimeX and council with the explicit order of making it a little bit shorter, so hopefully have that on your agenda for next week.
Anybody have anything else? Thank you, Alice.
That homeowner's insurance was what you needed, that was the.
My question.
When do you expect that?
Yes.
Okay.
Do you expect the decision?
Probate, not Supreme Court.
I, I need to, you need to let them know about the grant, that was one thing, so. To, to actually reassess with my grant funds, they did ask that I try to.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
Ambulance service contract?
So, the, the chief and EMS coordinator were here, probably just interested in also keeping, and she had a couple of provisions in the contract you wanted to. Her find out the proposed purchase of Delusio by the county is apparently falling apart, so it sounds like they're going to be going their parallel routes. Brock Delusio called me Monday when that news was getting out there, you know, made, made clear that they, they weren't for sale, just kind of, that opportunity had come up, so they were open to it. But they're, you know, planning to continue business as usual and not, not planning on going anywhere, so. Um, I told him I'd let him know if the board had any questions or concerns. I hadn't heard of any yet, but. Um, and so we had gotten that proposed three-year agreement that we had talked about a couple of weeks ago. So, chief had an opportunity to review that, so thank you.
Yeah, so, um. You know, it's, it's hard to discuss rumor mill. I mean, you know, we don't have anything inside this rock. You know, where his correspondence is. Stability of the company, so. But, you know, we're not sure how they're going to sustain once the county gets up around it, so. Again, my suggestion, my agree on that would be, I would go as minimum. I mean, we need to sign, we need to get a service, we have to have a service, so if we stay with Delusio for now. Uh, I would go as minimum month to month. And, and our maximum, if, if we have to go out a year, then quarter of the payments, but we don't want to get too far ahead. Not saying they are, but, you know, there's different things out there, so I mean, you have to. Be proactive here and smart, so if we don't want to go too far ahead, we can lose some money. If they can close the doors tomorrow, any company can close the doors, they are private, so. That's one of the discussions we had, I want to concern that, and there's some language in here, there's a couple new. Paragraphs that are added to this, I'm not sure what exactly why, it's two. Send, send both point down, I'm not sure why they, they wanted to get. A data information in all format. But the efficiency dispatch operation, I don't know what our data and that. And I live deputy west, it's kind of the more that way. Where would that is a formats, there are communication formats from dispatch to our spotted jaw. For, for that, so we couldn't, part of the sense of information there, we're not sure where. You know, we're not saying they're going to take it and, and use it anyway, but if they're not, like, we guard that information, so if we have public information. We have your, Mike, your safe combination, we have that here at home, so we keep that, you know, our lockbox or something like that, so. You want to elaborate a little more, maybe?
Yeah, so, problem with the cat information that we see is, it's just that kind of blast that goes out, comes to our software. Gets there and some of the stuff that you store on there is, i.e. people's lock codes, uh, locations of keys, things like that. And the important thing is, it doesn't discriminate with the call, so. It was a fire call or just a service call or something like that, and information is sent to our, our basically what we call our. Computer system or software, so we have that there. Way it works now is it's a medical call, like, they go, dispatch will relay to them, hey, calling for, for. And that's what we're concerned about is, is, we don't know, that just goes out. We control it on our end how it gets sent out and where it gets sent out through our programs. Whereas I'm not sure on the other end, once it gets out there, we have no, no saying or hear, you know, we don't know what was. Obviously, we don't think any of it, hopefully, various, but it is information that's trusted to us from the community that we try to keep. Close towards us, I guess you'd say, and that, that, that is kind of a concern, I guess, for not knowing what the tech or that language is.
Yeah, I guess, you know, we, we need a little more explanation of what they're going to use that.
Could, could you give a couple of explanations, so I understand?
So, like, we have our, our spotted dog, all our. Firefighters have a program on their phone that, so when it comes out, you don't have your pager, it hits your phone. And that blast comes out with a summary address, and then it gives all kinds of information on it. How that information gets on, sometimes it's there, sometimes it's not. But what it does is it, all the information we have stored at our, at the. Dispatch center, when they type it out, and whenever that information is sent, it sometimes sends some of those, that kind of information out. And it just goes out, it's, it's there. So, like, with us, we know who's on our program, and if they leave the department or anything like that, that all gets shut off. And then the other one, new program that we're working on now, which will be even more guarded, is that that ESO program we're working on, that's that same information. Pushed out, which is firehouse, I don't know, I'm sure it's lifeblood firehouse. It's all that kind of stored information, people's names, addresses, sometimes their birth, phone numbers, everything like that, all kind of stored in that. And that would be, you know, kind of information, I don't, I don't know if that's something that should be on a regular basis, just being sent out, because it would go out, any call we get called out to. Um, I do feel, maybe in some of the discussion, because it's going to be new, some things changing here in the future that may be accommodate that, but. There, despite hasn't kind of solidified that, can't push it forward.
So, we, we could push back on that and just, at this stage, ask for clarification?
Absolutely, I wasn't, that, that's a new article they put in there, so we're not sure what, you know. I, I don't want to use the word intention, I don't know, I'm sure what they're doing.
Is it, is it trying to, trying to address an operational issue?
Yeah, I, I, and I would say, you know, that we're accusing them of any, you know. That anything detrimental. It is, if it's our information, we're not sure where it goes with another agency. Then the second, there was a second, the, the, the last paragraph on page two was, there's some. Language in there that was not in, it's not in previous contract about. Uh, officers, uh, you know, anyone with rank or authority, so, I mean, we work with them, you know, on a professional basis, so. I'm not sure why that is in there either, I mean, if, it's a major incident, they're going to have a representative, uh, at the, at the command post. So, I, I don't really know what that's going in there on that, and that's kind of the question we had. Let's say. It, it's that type of major incident, we're not going to be working on it. I mean, we recognize their, their rank structure as it is, so. So, the fire department has authority on scene, it's, it's already under jurisdiction, so. Then the, the rules of regs in the R S A is the fire department is charged at scenes. So, I don't know what, what, where that comes in as well, so that's something we can ask for more clarification as well.
Was there anything else like that that was added?
No.
Those are just added over new from last contract, and it was saying it just needed more clarity on it. Some kind of discussion to figure out why it was added.
These are all. All questions that should be answered. And, and, you know, you guys are dabbling in it day to day. And if you got questions, you need answers. Period.
Was there any other rewording within the contract, or is the rest of it the same as what we've been doing?
Compared, I haven't seen anything else.
That's all that their legal review a couple of years ago, so look at that one again.
Except for the price, don't know.
Oh, wow.
Still, still a bargain.
Yeah, so, that's, and I do a reiterate too, with, with all the nation paper and things, I think that landscape may change. You know, next year could be a little different thing, so kind of curious to. How's the law play out here, that's new, that just like they were also, they're not combining, but taking over, purchasing whatever the language was, but.
I think there were enough question marks that have been raised in the past six months or nine months or whatever. That, that, that do justify answers.
And it affects this town great, really, it's one of the bigger.
Yeah, absolutely.
With this contract, will King continue to be the backup?
As far as I know, yeah, well, excuse me, yeah, I'm not sure if King is going to back them up. That, that is not spelled out here, will they're back up?
They're probably glad we forced them to get that into a written agreement, though, I bet. It's a good question, though, I didn't even.
Couldn't we ask for that to be an addendum to this? Or reference it somehow?
Yeah, good point, yeah, because that happened subsequent to our last contract, so. Good idea.
I, I'm inclined to support the three-year contract because of the ninety-day capability of withdrawing. And, and the reason being, it gives us stability in pricing for three years. But I'm interested in, in your approach, which is different than that, so I'd be curious to, to have you support the, the shorter term approach. I'm certainly open to it, looking at it from one perspective, you're looking at it from another.
Right, yeah, because. You know, like, my brain is just to, to, you know, we're not sure of the futures, I'm not sure of this, the area needs. More ambulances, we're not sure that these two. Organizations can, can stay, you know, remain. I think the county's had. Too bad than private service, if it comes down to. How to work, will we eat some birds, something like that, you know?
In the style that they got in the pockets. Plus, there's going to be two more ambulances, I think, in the area next year as well.
When we look at it, the biggest, one of the biggest things is, is personnel. There are going to be computers and personnel, which, not like people are going to be dropping out of, out of the sky to. And both of these entities are going to be fully stopped, but it's going to be the same pool of people, it just depends where. Which side of the, who they're to them, who they work on, so. Stay in key, or they're going to move over to Swansea. You know? But, yeah, I would definitely like to stay in that one year range. But I see your point too, but in that. They sustain, very well sustain three. Not sure.
I think there is some real questions as to what the existence is going to be at the end of. A shortened period of time. You can read between the lines.
I've heard enough, I'm reading.
You know, I've got some doubts as to how much longer. RJ is going to be viable.
So, I, I, anyway, I, I go back to my other comment, the, the reason I'm supportive of it, it seems like we have protection, we're, we're paying on a quarterly basis, we have a ninety-day option. To, to withdraw with, with no explanation. If they do want a business, they go out of business. We, we're in a kind of a buying now because the county's not ready. If you want to think, if we had this to compare to that, then, then we could be reasonably assured, but. And, and late this year, early next year, it could turn out to be summer, fall, or whatever, next year, so. That, that's my main reason for supporting the three years, is that we, we do have that stability and we do have the option. If, if we want to withdraw, we can, we can withdraw, but like I said, I'm open to the, to the other as well, whatever my colleagues agree with.
Well, if you look at the building that sits around about Swansea, it is being deconstructed.
Yes, I saw it, the, the sign.
Only the bad parts.
So, it's being reconstructed.
But it looks much better.
Yeah. They're able to use those timbers somewhere, because that looked like post-appeal, but maybe it's not. So, y'all are gonna, who, who was doing the follow-up, y'all working collective with Brandon?
Oh, Michael, you discussed with Robbie, right?
Yeah, yeah, if you want to come over and do a conference call too. Former Swansea guy, right?
Yes.
So, do we want to approve it, subject to getting those sorted out or bring it back next week? We got plenty of time before July one, unfortunately, so.
Well, I think, yes, for more information on those bullet items and. If it gets to us, maybe next week.
Plenty of time.
We don't get into those May vacation blocks.
Thank you, thank you, appreciate the research on it. Next item is optional emailing of tax bills.
This is something Tax Collector Westcott brought to our attention, I think it's a good idea, it's an option where purely voluntary, people don't want to get that paper tax bill. On the mail that we have to pay to get printed, nailed out, and wanting to get their email, they can sign up to do that. And it does come with a five hundred bucks a month.
A year.
Sorry, year, yeah. Five hundred dollar a year cost. Again, fully voluntary, no one's, you know, getting signed up that doesn't want to be, so I think it's a, it's a really good option, probably will end up saving us a good amount.
Does it, does it go through the New Hampshire tax kiosk, or is it different?
It's through our avatar tax kiosk, I don't, is that the same as the New Hampshire tax? I think it is, yeah.
So, they, they, they have the, do we have the ability now to go on and pull that off of our own accord? Pull the bill?
Yeah, they can sprint their bill, but.
Yes.
Uh, as far as sending it out statute early, right?
Right.
We have to.
Question, how, how does the taxpayer know?
So, how do they know?
Whether they.
That this is an option?
Yes.
It'll be printed on the bill, but, you know, the public informational.
It's going to be printed on.
Yeah, it'll be on the bill.
And then if you go to the kiosk, it'll probably have something on there, get paperless.
Yes, through. So, yes, now you can go on and look up bills, but it doesn't, it doesn't have the send out option, that's an additional feature.
So, in terms of what Beverly's asking, do we have the ability to put a little colored piece of paper in there? Letting people know as, as opposed to just.
Just putting it on the already crowded bill, yeah, it's a good idea.
It could also be in the.
Swansea uncovered?
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Even the future. Do you need a, need a motion or just consensus?
Either way, it's fine.
And then the motion, okay.
Motion made and seconded to go ahead with emailing of ta, tax bills. Home favor?
I.
Uh, maybe the schedule? On off, on off? Is that how it goes?
Yes.
Something like that?
Yep.
Anybody have any question or concerns about that? We can meet if we need to.
What's the?
Miss, we're in our soft weeks before nine AM this time.
If you come in at five PM on Tuesday, it's after nine AM on, before, it's before nine AM on Wednesday.
They won't be ready. Personnel policy update, you've been working?
We have been working, so these. We have been working, so these are, these are relatively uncontroversial chapters, the first couple made a lot of definitions and. Kind of general statements, but and again, this is kind of a, think of it as a first look. And then when we get into some of the, you know, deeper chapters, then we can always revisit some of these, so at this point, looking for main. You know, red flags or anything really, doesn't look right or. Or doesn't meet, you know, doesn't look like we're simplifying it, which is certainly part of the idea. I don't see we had disagreements, a little bit of a difference of opinion is on probationary periods, so right now. So this is on page forty-eight of the packet. Currently, police and fire is clear twelve months and then other town employees are six. Police especially usually takes that year if they're not, if they haven't gone to the academy to get through the academy and the FTO program. Fire department, whether they're going for EMT or firefighter one, often it takes, depending on when the classes are scheduled, six months to a year, so I think those make sense. There was some question if you wanna make that uniform, make all the town employees twelve months as well. The policy does allow them to be either extended or shortened, if someone's doing great after, you know, five, six months, we don't necessarily have to keep them on. Often if someone, you know, firefighter, they get their fire one, they're doing great, take them off after nine months, so. I'll throw that out there, don't necessarily need a decision now, but I just wanted to mention that.
What were the pros and cons?
Which which angle?
Well, you indicated there was some discussion on that.
Yeah, I guess, I guess the con to the six-month for general town employees, maybe someone. You know, starts in April and does great through the summer, but then when we get through budget season or tax season. There are some things at end of the year, you know, can be a very stressful time in certain positions, so to get that sense of someone going through the full year cycle. And making sure they've kind of got through all the different aspects, the con being. Probationary periods frankly don't really matter, I mean, we're in an outwit state, so maybe if someone's not doing good after eight months, even if we've taken them off probation. You know, still can discipline, let them go, and then just seems like a long time to. Have someone hanging out there, currently they're not able to use vacation time, I think that's something we wanna revisit when they're on probation. As they earn it, I'd like them to be able to, you know, take a day here or there. So, but as currently constructed, they're not able to take it off probation, so I think, you know, you hired someone that's coming from somewhere else, worked ten, twenty years, middle-aged person. Tell them they can't take any time off for years, it's not a good selling point these days. The other pro is it's consistent, everyone on the same. Same point, we're not breaking out different departments, and when possible, I'm trying to, unless there's a valid reason why. Departments are treated differently, trying to create a little more uniformity as I go through it, so. Again, I can make the case either way.
Could we eliminate the three bullet points and just have the. Point one, point eight, point one, point eight, say. All newly hired town employees on probationary status. For one year. So. With, to the terms of their offer of employment, or until their terms of their offer of women are satisfied. So that. That would basically give you an out if somebody satisfied their terms of employment before, that we could advance them off. And then just as far as the vacation. If they sign on, if their term of employment is they want. Less money and more vacation or something like that, maybe they could. You know. And like you said, work out that vacation being used during the probationary period, just take that off somewhere else.
Yeah.
Shorter the better, because we have to print this all off and give it to everybody, right?
Every time it changes.
Well, that part, but we're gonna do the whole packet, we're gonna give them a booklet, right?
Yeah.
So.
Yeah. The twelve months, or and or subject to completion of their.
Works for me.
He knows what he wants. Is there anything else that you thought was great?
Yeah, I mean, the main other thing is. Creating a category for regular part-time, which is basically. People that work more than twenty hours a week, so kind of the half-time, and as you'll see when we get into some of the other sections, is trying to give them. Some sick time, you know, we're certainly seeing in the pandemic, folks at the recycling centers, when it's COVID, it's out two weeks. And they work twenty-eight hours a week or something, but they don't get any sick time, especially for a lot of those, you know, folks, they need that money, and, you know. We've been solving it by Josh donating sick time and stuff, which is generous, but he should have his sick time too, so. I'll put that out, you know, again, we'll see when we get to those others, those other sections, but that's why that definition is a new one, and then for people under twenty hours. Just call them part-time, so we'll still have, you know, the people that work eight hours a week, sorry, you're still not gonna get. Sick time, but trying to create that class of, you know, because we rely on a lot of people that work. Good number of hours, but not full-time, so I think that would be a positive step.
It would be called flex time. Just, it would encompass sick and vacation.
We could, yeah, PTO. Yeah, in for the for the full-timers, I'm not a fan of that, just because I've heard a lot of towns when they do change over. Say that if they, if you don't cap factor in correctly how much you got for sick versus vacation, then you have people that have. Six weeks of vacation time, because they used to have. However many are sick, and so it can kind of backfire that way, so, but I think for the part-timers, where we're kind of starting from scratch, people don't have big balances. I think that would be simpler. Just call paid time off.
And then just if somebody uses paid time off. They can't use it. For forty hours or something without. Going through the vacation authorization.
Right, process. I think our policy for sixes, the sick time is more than three days, pay you a note or something, so. We can break that out, so it's clear if they're either taking vacation.
Can you think about using a a formula whereby the hours worked equals a certain amount of PTO? So you get, you you don't have to get into part-time, full-time.
That's kind of what I'm trying to do without making it too complicated, so I'm trying to just. Well, but you have to calculate. So that's why.
In my career, that's how they did it, a corporation did it, it, there was a calculation that was based on hours worked. And you might have gotten, you know, one hour or something, I don't know what.
They can give you what the hospital has, and then they have longevity in there too, with, you know, after five years, your ratio for what you make, you know. Right, paid time off.
Have that sort of evaluation, I mean. Equations for you?
They probably do, but the problem is someone might work twenty-four one week and then sixteen the next, and that's sort of calculating. That's why, and once we get up and running with a new software, I think maybe we'll have a better handle on how easy that is to calculate. But I think at this point, trying to keep it, like I said, a little bit simpler, if they're over twenty, basically giving them. A certain amount and not breaking out twenty versus twenty-eight versus, I I mean, I get it too, it's, you know, if someone works eighteen hours a week. They might not, they might be like, hey, how come two more hours? I'm not, you know, getting that time off, so. But then if someone works four, I don't, I don't know what the threshold is, but.
It's just a lot simpler for everybody concerned, because they had part-time workers too at the company I worked for, they're just, and whatever it was, it was, could be so many minutes. For every hour, I I don't remember, they, a PTO, it was all, you took a sick day, or you took a dirt day off, you took a. Whenever, you know, you gotta send them out based on what you want. Or you worked what time off you had, to a certain cap, I mean, I mean, the company wouldn't allow you to take, you know, five months off. Anyway, it's worth looking into.
Then we can buy off their paid time off January first, or if they won't.
Yeah.
Unless he makes them take a vacation.
That's, he makes them take the vacation.
Mr. Recreation.
Yeah, I I still don't understand the rollover. So. Be pushing back on that when we get to that.
You don't understand it in what regard?
I understand why we do it. I gather you got people that have been here forever, but what we're talking about new, it's to me, it's usually you lose it. That's where I came from, so that's where my wife is, to the used or gone, that we roll it over.
Yeah, I just, I don't, I can do a little bit of research on what other places do, but I think our our numbers are much less than. A lot of places that allow them to carry over enormous amounts, and I'm not suggesting we wanna go in that direction either, but. I don't, I think from compared to other municipalities, I think the amount we allow to carry over, we don't pay out sick time, a lot of places pay out sick time. I understand your point. So, yeah, we can look at it.
I think, I'm a little concerned about getting too far into it with part-timers, but. Is that allowed, how many part-time employees we have, maybe, is it, is it mostly recycling center?
So a couple of town hall, I mean, I don't think, I don't think we're talking dozens of people, but a couple of town hall, you know, police lieutenant is part-time, so. It's not. I I don't have a number in front of me, but. Not, not a huge number, but, but a few.
What are your thoughts on the seasonal? Summertime mowers and.
I did not go there to season.
They never come off probation.
Yeah, my plan with the part-timers, just, I know we're getting further than we actually had here, but was that it would not carry over and that it would not be paid out. So, not creating new liabilities in that regard.
Anything under old business?
I don't know if we wanted to mention our meeting yesterday.
Yeah, go ahead.
You wanna lead it or?
No, you you summarized it well.
Bill and I had a meeting with our friends at Senator Shaheen's office and the postal service about our. Tilted wind, windmills at the North Swansea zip code issue. Those two hours will never get back.
Two people unaffected by it, just remember that. I think we fled the case pretty well.
We've never suffered the pain.
I think Pam Slack really, really pushed the envelope on it. Absolutely, and Michelle Coda, who came from Shaheen's office, did a fabulous job. And and we ended up apologizing to the people from the postal service, because they're basically the mouthpieces. For something they they had nothing to do with. And basically, all it is, is they're just telling us to. Have you, that's it.
Who said that if it wasn't the post office?
Yeah, it wasn't the post office.
But who was it?
That's what I'm saying, they're basic, that's what the post office is basically telling us, we we don't care what you want, we don't, we don't care what makes sense. It even got to, it even got to the point where he made the comment about somebody dying, remember? And we we let him go on that, but basically, that's, that's it, unless unless we prove the case that somebody died because the. Emergency services went to Keene, Surrey, or whatever. They're not even gonna think about it. But the other piece of it was when we, when we agreed to this, what is it called, preferred last line? Well, I read the letter, we did, we we knew about it, we knew about it.
They told us that was what.
Yeah, that was the solution, I still don't really understand what the preferred last line is, but it allows you to put in Swansea, New Hampshire, zero, three, four, three, one. Instead of King, New Hampshire, zero, three, four, three, one.
Now you put in North Swansea.
Oh, no, we, we. Pin them down on that, and 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 let them know that there is no distinguishing characteristic of North Swansea. Legally, except for the post office, and and that we're, we're, we're making the effort to be Swansea. And so they did say if we wrote. Right. But.
Four, four, three, one.
Yeah, then you're supposed to use your.
Right.
Last four digits.
Which is trying to get Avatar to be able to put it in our bill.
Right, and of course, they didn't notify anybody about it, you just had to kind of pick up on it, which you were as stupid enough to do.
Changes. The last plus four changes. Because we've had different.
When the street address changes, maybe.
But just when the route changes.
It could be that too. No, I I think Michael and Pam Slack and Michelle did a terrific job at, and pushing the case for it. And 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 it really does make sense, it's just, doesn't make sense to them, so they had gotten back to us and indicated that there was a physical plant issue. And that's why they couldn't, they couldn't do it, and then they learned yesterday, there, there is no physical plant issue, because. We don't handle anything in Swansea, it's. So it's the same amount of mail, some's going to Swansea, some's going elsewhere.
So then they settled on, because they gave us the preferred last line five, five years ago, but they can't make any changes for ten years. Fortunately, it's taken so long, we're halfway through.
Let's take it the minutes, in case if any member of the public from the North Swansea reads it. Are you saying, are you saying that it would be delivered if they didn't use North?
That's what they told.
And they use Swansea and the, and the appropriate zip code with the last four digits.
That's what they told us.
Okay, the public's gonna read.
What are you sending slices?
Theoretically, if you use a zip code plus four, you don't even need to put.
Anything else?
The town or the state.
Right.
The address would be nice, you know, but.
Yeah, it was very frustrating me. What was even more frustrating was reading the emails afterwards. I I sat there looking at this, this young lady, and just wondering. Man, you gotta have a different mindset to be able to deal with this bureaucratic BS.
Did you have the bandoliers with cartridges and the?
No, but she was, she was given it to him, but at the same time, she understood she was getting nowhere. So they put up a good.
Oh, she wasn't from the post office, she was.
No, no, she was from Shaheen's office, it was two guys from the post office, nice guys. It's unfortunate.
Not very solution-oriented.
Did our guy from Maine make it, the one that got sick, but he gave approval and then he. Got sick.
Oh, that was, that wasn't the guy from Maine, that was the Keane postmaster, I think, right?
That's the guy from.
Pompey.
Yeah.
I don't know, they made more ominous allusions to how the Keane postmaster is unavailable, so, he's still sick after five years or.
Yeah, they made it clear he was unavailable for a meeting yesterday.
Yeah, he he came to the E nine oh one committee meeting, he said, I don't see any problem with getting this fixed, it doesn't make any sense, and then we never saw him again. They made him disappear.
Maybe they traded him to Putin for somebody.
He is a postmaster and a general, so.
But I did get the sense that unfortunately, Michelle Coda is leaving, she's going off to work for travel in New England or something like that. But I did get the sense that this is something that she is aware of, and they're.
Five years.
Yeah, well, yeah, we, they didn't tell us it was a ten-year moratorium until yesterday, that was not in the letter.
No.
But basically, we can't appeal their decision. For ten years.
Well, what brought it back this more recent time was Shaheen's office was trying to get it put into legislation. And that's when they came back with, that's not even possible for physical plant reasons, which is such.
And they kind of understood that yesterday, they were a little red-faced.
They they didn't even know about, they said they didn't even know.
Yeah.
I knew a guy that was a truck dispatcher, his favorite thing was what he learned in the military. The, any, anytime there was a problem, we referenced the use of indigenous personnel. Like you're stationed in Guam or something, so if there was a problem, the reason was the use of indigenous personnel. Maybe we could throw that back at us.
Indigenous North, North Swansea guerrillas, firefighters.
Yeah. So next time, maybe we all go on force. Won't matter.
In five years.
Hold, any other old business? We have any non-public?
Yes.
Six years, what have that guy? Yeah, I saw your email today. I don't know where it is, though. Oh, it's right there.
San Antonio?
Not big enough, I hope you're right.
San Antonio?
Hold up.
All right, you get to go to non-public. Now is your, now is your moment to express all that you want to.
Yeah, it's nothing, I I couldn't, I know I've come to the realization that. A, a phone call, I could have just called for this, and B, that I'm a very patient person. But I'm very interested as to how this works with the town meeting, and I, so. I actually kind of enjoy seeing how. Robert Krebs Carey.
Oh, yeah, okay.
I just wondered if you have heard anything on the study in Concord.
You've been enormously patient, I haven't, let me follow up with that and get back to you later this week.
And Representative Rhodes said she, for some reason, she. And Representative Rhodes said, for some reason, she cryptic text, she had talked to someone that's actually responsible for doing this study for a road that goes from thirty to thirty-five to cross one, thirty-five back to thirty. So just if you could, if you have my cell phone number out and give it to you now.
I know I have your email, but yeah, I can have your cell.
You know, wonderful unintended consequence, the ever source of putting up those pylons, it's slowing down traffic. With a guy with a stop sign. So for the time being, Graves concrete trucks can't go sixty thousand hours. I just have to laugh. Three-one-two, six-one-three, sixteen oh two. And thank you all for your service to the town. Thank you very much.
And next time, you don't have to wait till the end. We do the public input.
I, I will. It's all right. Thank you very much.
Consideration of legal advice. L, L for legal advice.
Legal, okay.
Make that.
Second. Colby, I, well, here, Karin's game.